To our final face-off.
Do we have any questions before we begin the final round? Then let us begin. Math, short answer. Starting at t equals zero and with no initial velocity, a vehicle traveling in a straight line accelerates at 6t meters per second squared. In meters, how far has the vehicle traveled in the first two seconds? B2.
Thirty-six meters.
Incorrect, team A. A, captain.
Eight meters.
That is correct, four points, team A. Bonus, math, short answer. On what interval is f of x, is the function, f of x equals the integral from zero to x of the expression 1 minus t dt, increasing?
One minus t?
Oh, the derivative, the negative one.
One minus x is the derivative?
No, it's the derivative, negative one, right?
So it's decreasing.
Five seconds.
From zero to infinity?
Incorrect, the answer is negative infinity, comma, one. Toss-up, biology, multiple choice. Which of the following is the most commonly accepted explanation for the adaptive advantage of bacterial restriction enzymes? W, protection against viral infection. Interrupt, B, captain.
W.
Correct, four points, team B. Bonus, biology, multiple choice. Which of the following would most likely be a restriction enzyme recognition site? W, C G G T A C. X, T A T G C A. Y, A T A C G C. Z, G A A T T C.
Where is it going, Jimmy?
I don't know.
Or is it G C G?
Z.
That is correct, ten points, team B. Toss-up, physics, multiple choice. Which of the following is the best explanation of entanglement in quantum mechanics? W, all events in a local system are linked. X, no two particles can occupy the same quantum state. Y, compton scattering. Z, interrupt, B3. Correct, four points, team B. Bonus, physics, multiple choice. Which of the following is the most consistent with the principle of complementarity according to the Copenhagen interpretation? W, no quantum event is local. X, energy and matter are interchangeable. Y, a quantum particle can manifest itself as either a wave or particle but not both simultaneously. Z, there are hidden variables that complement and explain the illusion of the indeterminate nature of the quantum world.
It's not supersymmetry, is it?
Okay, what do you guys think?
Why is it how I?
I don't know.
Please give me some.
Five seconds.
Y, correct, ten points, team B. Toss-up, chemistry, short answer. What is the Van Hooft factor for a non-electrolyte such as sucrose? B1.
One.
Correct, four points, team B. Bonus, chemistry, short answer. A glucose solution has an osmotic pressure of 30.0 atmospheres at 300 K. To the first decimal place, what is the molarity of the solution?
Thirty over 24. Yeah. The first decimal place.
Final four, one point two five.
One point two five, the first decimal place, one point three.
One point three.
That is correct, ten points, team B. Toss-up, math, multiple choice. The theorem of Papus is used to calculate the volume of a solid of revolution generated by rotating a plane figure about an external axis. To apply the theorem, the area of the figure must be known and what other quantity? W, the figure's minimum distance to the axis. X, the figure's maximum distance to the axis. Y, the figure's centroid distance to the, interrupt, A, captain.
Z.
Incorrect, four points, team B, I'll repeat it. Math, multiple choice. The theorem of Papus is used to calculate the volume of a solid of revolution generated by rotating a plane figure about an external axis. To apply the theorem, the area of the figure must be known and what other quantity? W, the figure's minimum distance to the axis. X, the figure's maximum distance to the axis. Y, the figure's centroid distance to the axis. Z, the figure's arc length. B1.
X.
Incorrect, the answer is Y. Toss-up, general science, multiple choice.
Uh, just make clear.
General science, multiple choice. Which of the following instruments was used to first detect the cosmic microwave background radiation? W, space-based infrared spectrometer. X, ground-based infrared spectrometer. Y, ground-based radio, interrupt, A, captain.
Y.
Correct, four points, team A. Bonus, general science, short answer. Name all of the following four fabrics that will soften and/or dissolve when exposed to nail polish remover. Acetate, wool, rami, silk.
Five seconds.
Silk and acetate?
Incorrect, just acetate. Toss-up, earth science, multiple choice. Which of the following is one of the most important characteristics for a group of fish called loped fin fish that lived during the Devonian period? W, they were able to turn a portion of their stomachs out through their mouth and thus digest food outside their bodies. X, they had a shell-like covering that rigidly stood up into seafloor sediment. Y, they had a three-chambered heart and no swim bladder. Z, they began to adapt to terrestrial environments. Uh, B2.
Z.
Correct, four points, team B. Bonus, earth science, multiple choice. Which of the following is closest to the date of when the Earth is farthest from the Sun in 2010? W, summer solstice. X, winter solstice. Y, March 20th. Z, July 4th.
Are you a hundred percent sure? It's a W, X, Y, Z, right? I can give W.
W. Incorrect, the answer is Z.
Uh, you'd like to challenge that?
Okay, stop clock.
The answer is correct.
Yeah.
All right, absolutely correct.
Okay.
Let's continue. Toss-up, chemistry, multiple choice. Esters are produced from the reaction of? W, water and alcohols. X, alcohols and carboxylic, interrupt, B, captain.
X.
Correct, four points, team B. Bonus, chemistry, short answer. Find the change in entropy in kilojoules for the following reaction. 2H2 gas plus O2 gas yields 2H2O gas. Assume the bond energy of the HH, uh, OO and OH bonds are 435, 500, and 460 kilojoules per mol respectively.
Five seconds.
What is it, positive seventy-five?
Positive seventy-five.
Incorrect, the answer is negative 470. Toss-up, biology, multiple choice. Which of the following best describes the density gradient centrifugation? W, using a high-speed centrifuge to remove substances of different densities. Interrupt, A1.
W.
Incorrect, four points, team B, I'll repeat it. Biology, multiple choice. Which of the following best describes density gradient centrifugation? W, using a high-speed centrifuge to remove substances of different densities. X, adding a self-actionate to a dense solution such as glycerol and centrifuging at high speed for hours. Y, centrifuging different density media in different tubes to find their relative densities. Z, removing various density solutes by centrifuging at very high speed for many hours. Uh, B, captain.
Z.
Incorrect, the answer is X. That finishes the first half, two-minute break. Toss-up, physics, multiple choice. The Dirac equation is compatible with the principles of? W, quantum mechanics only. X, special relativity only. Y, general relativity only. Interrupt, A, captain.
Z.
Correct, four points, team A. Bonus, physics, short answer. By words or number, name all of the following four choices that are characteristics of three-phase electric induction motors when compared to single-phase electric motors if both motors are rated at 7.5 horsepower. One, less compact. Two, more efficient. Three, lower vibration. Four, higher starting torque.
More efficient? Less compact, more efficient? Low vibration, higher starting torque? Three compared to one?
Five seconds.
Two and three? Incorrect, two, three, and four. Toss-up, astronomy, multiple choice. Which of the following was the technique used to measure the mass of Sagittarius A star by the Max Planck Institute? W, flux of X-ray emissions. X, redshift of the local group. Y, speed, interrupt, B2.
Y.
Correct, four points, team B. Bonus, astronomy, multiple choice. Which of the following is most likely true? W, general relativity breaks down at very high temperatures. X, the inflationary phase of the universe occurred after the first star is formed. Y, string theory successfully predicts the unification of all forces at high temperatures. Z, small variations in the cosmic microwave background are inconsistent with the Big Bang Theory.
Okay, so what is it?
Your general relativity breaks down as you approach Big Bang.
As high temperatures. Okay, W, um.
W, correct, ten points, team B. Toss-up, earth science, multiple choice. Most of the world's desert and steppe climates are located closest to which of the following? W, the polar edge of the Ferrell cell. X, the polar edge of the Hadley cell. Y, the equator. Z, the poles. B1.
X.
Correct, four points, team B. Bonus, earth science, multiple choice. The upper-level winds in the Hadley cell over the northern hemisphere generally flows in which of the following directions? W, northwesterly. X, southwesterly. Y, northeasterly. Z, southeasterly.
Upper Hadley-Ferrell.
Okay, so like at 30 degrees. It goes around like this. So, uh.
Five seconds.
X.
That is correct, ten points, team B. Toss-up, general science, multiple choice. When measuring the percent transmittance of a test solution with a spectro photometer such as a Spec-20, which of the following types of cuvats would be best for measurements at wavelengths of 360 nanometers? W, plastic. X, borosilicate. Y, aluminum. Z, fused quartz. A, captain. Y, incorrect. B1.
X.
Incorrect, the answer is Z. Toss-up, astronomy, short answer. Spin flip causes 21-centimeter emission from interstellar hydrogen at the atomic level. Name two of the following four choices that the spin flip is caused by. Electron spin, proton spin, neutron spin, positron spin. Uh, A, captain.
One and three?
That is incorrect. B2.
One and four.
That is incorrect, this is electron spin and proton spin. Toss-up, chemistry. Toss-up, chemistry, short answer. What is the name of the group or bond formed when the hydroxyl group of carbon five of D-glucose in its open-chain form reacts with the same molecules aldehydes group? B, captain.
Glycosidic linkage?
Incorrect.
Time.
Uh, after the time, the answer is hemiacetal. Toss-up, biology, multiple choice. Which of the following occurs in the sliding filament mechanism of striated muscle during muscle contraction? W, the length of the A-band remains constant and the length of the sarcomere can only decrease. X, the length of the A-band decreases and the length of the sarcomere can decrease or increase. Y, the length of the A-band decreases and the length of the sarcomere remains constant. Z, the length of the A-band decreases and the length of the sarcomere decreases. A2.
X.
Incorrect. B, captain.
Z.
Incorrect, the answer is W. Toss-up, physics, multiple choice. Which of the following experimental findings was one of the first to strongly support the existence of the quantum property of electron spin? W, splitting of spectral lines of elements. X, cathode ray deflection by magnetic fields. Y, the integer value of electron charge. Interrupt, A, captain.
Z.
Incorrect, that's four points to team B, I'll repeat it. Physics, multiple choice. Which of the following experimental findings was one of the first to strongly support the existence of the quantum property of electron spin? W, splitting of spectral lines of elements. X, cathode ray deflection by magnetic fields. Y, the integer value of electron charge. Z, the discovery of the positron. B1, W. Correct, four points, team B. Bonus, physics, short answer. By words or number, name all of the following three choices that have yet to be detected experimentally. One, magnetic monopole. Two, Bose-Einstein condensate. Three, gravitational waves.
We have gravitational waves, it's just we have.
We have, yeah. Right, right, right. Should I J C you?
No, I'm so sure because we have a big thing on a calc test.
Just one?
It's just the first one, the non-magnetic, yeah.
Are you pretty sure about that?
I am so sure. No gravity waves.
The first one.
Incorrect, the first and the third. Okay, stop.
Is it a challenge?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure they've detected gravity waves from like rotating binary pulsars and so they have been detected experimentally.
We don't have a confirmed detection that's reproduced and accepted. Your coach will explain why you're wrong later.
All right.
No change, uh, this challenge is over.
Thank you. Toss-up, earth science, multiple choice. Most of the meteorites that strike Earth are which of the following types? W, pure iron. X, iron-nickel. Interrupt, B1.
X.
Incorrect, four points to team A, I'll repeat it. Earth science, multiple choice. Most of the meteorites that strike Earth are which of the following types? W, pure iron. X, iron-nickel. Y, chondrites. Z, acandrites. A, captain.
Y.
Correct, four points, team A. Bonus, earth science, multiple choice. Which of the following is not part of the Melanchovitch theory for the triggering mechanisms of glacial, interglacial climatic events of the Pleistocene? W, lunar libration. X, Earth's orbital eccentricity. Y, procession of the equinoxes. Z, angle between Earth's axis and a line perpendicular to the plane of its orbit around the Sun.
Y.
Incorrect, the answer is W. Toss-up, math, short answer. How many of the following four functions are odd functions? Cosine 3x, natural log x, e to the x, e to the x cubed. A, captain.
Cosine 3x?
Incorrect. B1.
None of them.
That is correct, four points, team B. Bonus, math, short answer. Two squares are placed next to each other to form a rectangle. What is the ratio of the length of the diagonal of the rectangle to the length of the diagonal of one of the squares?
Root three over two? Root three over root two?
So that's just five.
Why is it root five?
It's two and nine.
Two. Okay, so square root of root, okay. Over two?
Square root of five halves. That is correct, ten points, team B. And we have the winners, North Hollywood High School.
A spectacular comeback. As dramatic as their previous defeat, North Hollywood rallied and will now move on to compete in the Department of Energy's 2010 National Science Bowl in Washington, DC. For more information on the LADWP Science Bowl and other education programs sponsored by the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, log on to www.ladwp.com and click on Community Involvement and then LADWP in the School.
To help answer those questions, the city took part in Golden Guardian, a week-long series of statewide exercises designed to test our ability to deal with a catastrophic natural disaster or terrorist attack. On November 13th, the Shakeout Drill was held, a simulated 7.8 earthquake, and all more than 5 million people took part statewide. Here at Bishop Alamaney High School in Mission Hills, 300 students volunteered to act as victims of the quake, and they really got into character.
I'm burning my face and I have a bruise on my arm, my wrist right here, you can see on my hand.
I have a burn injury, well, kind of a burn, more gruesome than a burn, normal burn. Then I have a scratch on my cheek and a head gash, so I'm a little messed up right now.
At 10:00 AM, Bishop Alamaney's students joined thousands of other people throughout the city and millions statewide in reacting to a simulated 7.8 earthquake. These young people did what they've been taught to do when a quake hits. They got under their desks to write things out. In this exercise, the quake lasted a full two minutes. After the rumbling had stopped, they made their way through smoke-filled halls to a predetermined meeting area outside.
Mark?
Yeah.
Jonathan?
Yeah.
Students, I should not hear a word until we have rule taken. We've gone through search and rescue, not a word.
Of course, in a real quake, many of these students would be hurt, so in this exercise, the injured were taken to the school's football field, be evaluated, and then transferred to nearby Providence Holy Cross Medical Center to be treated. At a news conference here, Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger talked about why Golden Guardian is so important to all Californians.
It's one thing to talk about being ready for emergency, but it's another thing to actually test it and practice it and really see each year where the shortcomings are and the correctness shortcomings. That's what this exercise is all about.
Los Angeles Mayor Antonio Villarosa spearheaded the city's response to this fictional quake, but he made sure all city departments, especially the ever-critical first responders, LA's fire and police departments, acted as if this earthquake had been real.
Imagine the most tumultuous two minutes of ground shaking you've ever experienced in your life. I'm a native Angelino and I've been through my share of earthquakes, but nothing, nothing that I've been through, nothing that any of us have been through, will compare to the great earthquake.
Imagine that when you call 911, nobody will respond. Imagine that you have to wait around for hours and sometimes days before emergency response personnel can even contact you.
So, as a city, how do we do? Are we prepared for a large earthquake and its aftermath? The fact this exercise was held at all means we're ahead of the game when it comes to being ready when the big one hits.
We can talk about preparedness, but unless you actually physically prepare for an emergency of this nature, you really don't know what comes up. What are the problems? Where are the kinks? What do we have to work on? Where are we strong?
It succeeded beyond our wildest expectations. We've ended up with 5.3 million registered participants. I think a lot more people have heard about it through the news. And it's, we're trying to get the community to think about the earthquake problem. It's really easy to try and pretend it doesn't exist because they don't happen that often. And watching the city do all of this work and watching the people of the city be willing to be part of it is very inspiring.
The city is prepared, and why I say that is, we in the Southern California area have gone through disaster after disaster after disaster. Earthquakes, brush fires, floods, and our first responders from the local county, state, have managed those and also have moved forward with recovery from those events in the past.
Rarely do we take the time to face the reality of the greatest natural disaster Southern California will face in our lifetime. But today, we take that time. Today, we do that exercise because we know that one day it will come.
Make sure you're prepared for the big one. For tips on how you can get ready for an earthquake or other natural disaster, log onto www.readyla.org.
Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm a Nyanga yoga teacher here in Los Angeles, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel. Namaste.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for April 27, 2010. It is Tuesday and it is a little bit after 11 o'clock. We did start an hour late because of the funeral for former Chief Daryl Gates, and I know a number of members are returning as we speak from that funeral. I want to thank those council members who are here already, Councilmembers Alacon Cardenas, Krikorian, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, and Wesson, thank you for your attendance. And the following council members are late, Councilmember Hahn, Corretz, Labonge, and Smith. Ms. Hahn and Mr. Zine are excused today, and Mr. Parks is excused to arrive late. So if they will please join us as soon as possible, we will begin our meeting shortly. We have before us the agenda for today. That's made available 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance, for our special meeting items. That's here in council chambers, it's posted in City Hall, and also is available online at lacity.org, where you also find links to our city departments and our city services to improve the quality of your life here in Los Angeles. We also do have this meeting broadcast live on Channel 35, rebroadcast each evening on the city's cable system, and we are available online, streaming webcasts through lacity.org and through your telephone by calling 213-621-CITY. And you can listen into the audio proceedings of the full council or any of our committee meetings using your telephone. If you would like to be heard on any of the items that are on today's agenda, please throw out a speaker card here, or if you live closer to San Pedro and Van Nuys, you can fill out a card and you can testify from those remote locations. Items that have already had public hearings would require reopening of those hearings by council member, but items that have not yet had a public hearing, you automatically would be able to be heard here. There is a podium and a clock to help you guide your time, and for any general public comment on items that are not on today's agenda, but nevertheless, under our jurisdiction, you can fill out a speaker card too for two minutes before the public. With that, this is our last quorum call. It is about 20 minutes after the hour for council members Weezer, Corretz, Labonge, and Smith. If they'll please join us, and if Sergeant Adams can please inquire their whereabouts. If we fail to hit a quorum, we will adjourn for lack of a quorum. Thank you.
First items on the agenda, items 1 through 4 are street lighting ordinances, notice
We're still awaiting Mr. Weezer, and Mr. Smith, and Mr. Labonge. Next order of business?
Items 5 through 9 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. 5 through 9, colleagues, anybody wishing to call any of those special? If not, let's go ahead and please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 10 through 19 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. There is a request to continue items 17 and 18 one week to May 4.
Okay, let's continue those without objection.
14, sorry.
14 for Ms. Perry. And we have cards on?
There are cards on items 11, 12, 13, 15, 16, and 19, leaving only item 10, which is an ordinance. Do you wish to hold that?
Yeah, let's hold that on the desk for 12 members. Next items, please.
On the continuation agenda, items 20 and 21 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there are cards on both of those.
Okay. Let's go ahead and call those special for cards from the public, and that will take us to our general public comment now. I'd like to invite Dr. Clyde Williams forward as our first speaker for general public comment.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Cerrano, Northeast LA. We just had a meeting on ECAF, but I won't discuss that. I'll discuss he. How about the new interim acting general manager of DWP? Is he going to be more transparent than the previous ones? I doubt it, because there seems to be a big snow job that DWP does. This morning, no one can figure out what had happened between the Board of Water and Power and the City Council as to, do we have rate increases or not? Why? Because DWP doesn't clearly state, here's how much it's costing us now, here's how much it's going to cost us over the next one year, and here's how much it's going to cost us to the year 2020, when we have to get rid of coal and convert it to something else. Even the geothermal has apparently been found to be unusable. So we have a problem. DWP doesn't tell us what they're doing. Will the new general manager provide us with transparency? I kind of doubt it, because he comes from a corporate world which does not allow public participation, except through the board, through the stockholders' representatives. And we know what happens with Goldman Sachs. So I would highly recommend that you apply 245 to the appointment of the interim general manager for the Department of Water and Power, and make sure that he's going to make it much more transparent and comprehensible, because even one of the commissioners from the Board of Water and Power once said, "If I can't understand it, how can I tell anyone else what it's doing?" Thank you.
Thank you very much. Phil, who is our next speaker? After that will be John Walsh. Good morning, Mr. Hurd.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the L.A. City Council. I just want to bring your attention that the council's considering a 0% rent freeze, that landlords cannot raise their rent. This is terrible, because more and more landlords are being driven out of business in Los Angeles. As they sell their buildings, developers are buying these properties, they're tearing them down, and the working poor are losing their apartments. It sends a very severe anti-business message. Right now, jobs are leaving L.A., more people are becoming homeless, and also, the city employs these outside activist organizations through the L.A. Housing Department that come to apartment buildings and teach tenants how to sue their landlords. This is discrimination. These activist organizations are tied into law firms. You're driving business, and you're driving jobs out of L.A. I suggest break all the contracts with these outside activist organizations, and use that money to keep more city employees in the job. You have a lot of hard-working city employees, deserve to keep their job and not lose their job. And also, regarding O'Varis Street, the City Council stated that as a landlord, they're entitled to fair market value rent, yet they don't allow landlords in L.A. to have fair market value rent. You can't have it both ways. And then they want to raise the rent on these small businesses from 100 to 500%? I mean, that's criminal. You're going to drive these people out of business. I mean, ideology is one thing, but in the real world, you know, social problems are not solved by creating more laws. You have to have fairness for the workers, you have to have fairness for the landlords, and for the renters, and when you corrupt the equation, the end result is always corrupted. So don't put the O'Varis Street people out of business, cut the contracts with these outside activist firms that pretend to be something they're not, and help keep small landlords in business so people don't lose their apartments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. John Walsh is next, after that is Martin.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S, 1.5 million visitors since September 3 of last year. All we are saying is give peace a chance. All we are saying is give recall a chance. We have something remarkable here: left, right, center, multicultural rainbow coalition. The only people who aren't refusing to recognize us is the L.A. Times and the Daily News. Thanks for the electronic media, which has given us enormous amounts of exposure. There was a Nazi rally here. Only four self-identified anti-Nazis, four self-identified Jews. Melrose Larry Green, a man with the Star of David tattooed to him, a woman with Jewish Federation of Labor Council sign, and one other person with an Israeli flag draped around him. There were six people identified as Aztecs in the city of Los Angeles. They were wearing Aztec dress. When you have a Nazi rally, and more Aztecs show up than Jews, only in Los Angeles, and it was not covered. The lying L.A. Times said that Nazis were severely beaten. The AP said light hurt, moderate beating, light beating. I'm telling you right now, HollywoodHighlands.org, the name of the heckler gates, the name of the gay heckler organization that attacked the mayor, I mean, excuse me, the President of the United States. I said it was on the website Friday, it wasn't. We had problems putting it up. If you want to know what went on when the President of the United States was treated like trash by hecklers, you have to come to my website. It's on there today, HollywoodHighlands.org. And as to you Nazi tolerant, seek aisle, Nazi tolerant Garcetti.
Our next speaker is Martin Hanlon. After that is Phil Jennerjohn. If I can ask folks, please sit down, yes? Thank you.
Hello, my name's Martin Hanline. If you look me up on Google, I'm a pedophile. If you pull up the case, I'm nowhere on it. Because I went and helped out the Justice Department when they wanted information on the murder of a woman in Riverside, by the Riverside Police, that's how they repaid me. Father Gregory, this Cardinal, and this Mayor have worked very hard and diligently to keep this story from being told. SNAP was compromised, Mary Grant was entertained by a sergeant out of Orange County, protecting that crooked police chief down there, who had this investigation started all these years ago to protect Henry and George Steinbrenner from my past. If this seems very disjointed, it's because I don't have enough time to tell all this story here. I am not going to be abused anymore by your police department, who put a camera in my room, recorded me and my girlfriend, listened to many conversations, then removed it, and she was raped. I don't know where she is now. I don't want to start something more with the LAPD, but I do want their help, and I would like Ms. Jan Perry to know, I stood in the rain for an hour and a half to talk to you in 2006. Beside me was an undercover police officer. When I finally got up to you, the captain from Central pulled up, came in, took you out the back. This has been the ongoing story because of the illegal wiretaps, cameras, and the undercover police officer working in my building.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Phil Jennerjohn, and after that we'll go to Van Nuys, and Donna Perman will be our next speaker.
Good morning, council members. My name is Phil Jennerjohn. I'm currently a candidate for U.S. Congress in the 33rd Congressional District. My opponent in the election is Karen Bass. She's a valid socialist. Unfortunately, she believes in the ideology of totalitarian government control over everything and everyone, especially when she's in power, and it's not surprising that she has the ringing endorsement of many people sitting here at this council. I'm not here today to talk about that election, I'm here today to talk about the recall of Mayor Antonio Viegosa. I have petitions right here. The website, recallcityhall.org, is going pretty well. We have a lot of people volunteering and setting out to distribute petitions around the city. Now, the plan is, there are thousands of precincts in this city, and we're going to need actually a lot more people than what we have right now. The plan is, we're going to raise money, we're going to pay for the printing of these petitions, and we're going to have people go around in their own neighborhoods and precincts and drop these off on the doors of registered voters, and the voters will have an opportunity. They can read it, and they can sign it, mail it in, or they can choose not to. It's possible the mayor could survive. I don't know. We'll see. There are a lot of people who are willing to help, and some of you here in council chambers today, or somewhere in the City Hall building, are interested. We have a big box, we have a big stack of petitions in the back, if you want to take a stack and go hand them out in your neighborhood, or one of your community organizations. And that's about all I have to say about that, is this, one other question I have--
Could you get a little closer to the microphone, Mr. Jennerjohn? Thank you.
One other question I have is, why is Richard Alacon still here? I mean, to me, the city is just begging for a lawsuit from the voters of the 7th District for fraudulent representation. I think you need to take care of that situation. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Donna Perman. She's in Van Nuys. After that Arnold Sacks back here in council chambers. Good morning, Ms. Perman.
Good morning. Anyway, Maron Fogler couldn't be here, she's not very well. I miss her inside, but she'll be back. Now, the City Council wants high-priced rail. They don't care how much security problems it causes, invites robberies, assaults. We have to have security around these rails. We don't have the money to buy security for these rail projects. We have now, now we want more. Where are we going to put the stairs, and the elevators, and escalators? Who's going to lose their business? Who's going to volunteer, or is it eminent domain? Underground and orange line invite people to get on without paying also. You get on the middle near, or near the end, you don't see a conductor. It's honor system. You use the machine, that you use the machine, or have a pass, or a tap card that you use on the machine, too. I haven't been asked to show proof mostly. Secondly, we are in earthquake country. Well, these so-called trains, hey, subway, folks, hold on, hold on in a huge earthquake? What if it hits in midday instead of 4:30 in the morning? These, the Mayor, Councilman Alacon, Rosendahl, Garcetti, Cardenas, perhaps all of you want a legacy. Of course, the CRA can have their new projects. We're in deep trouble, and we spend. Folks who are working on it, why do you want your job to end in 10 years instead of 30? It doesn't help you, it only helps Mr. Rosendahl see his dream. You have a lot of problems, the city, our federal government will only help the MTA, CRA, City Council, Mayor, and perhaps get their legacy, so they'll be known for all time. In the meantime, our city employees are having all sorts of problems. I say, let's recall Mayor Antonio now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Arnold Sacks here, and then Anker Patel.
Good morning. Thank you, Arnold Sacks. I'd like to give a shout-out to Zuma Dog, hope he's well. And, Mr. President, I hope to see you in Pumping Iron sequel number 22. Saw you video on TV yesterday at the park. That being done, there was an article in the L.A. Times on the 10th, or the 16th, audit rips fire department discipline. And I was just wondering what's up with the fire department. It states in this article, in 2006, there were 3,600 members, but the article goes on to say that there are more than 1,600 complaints filed in the last two years. So what's wrong? That's almost one out of every two firemen are filing a complaint against the city. What's the cost to investigate these complaints? What the heck is going on with the fire department that there's 1,600 complaints, one out of every two? By the way, in this article on the March 16, 24% in state lack health insurance. I wonder, how many of the people who are under the auspices of the living wage law lack health insurance? You know, the one where they get an extra $1.25 unless they work at the airport, where they get $3.25 extra, and the companies let them, are allowed to eliminate their health insurance coverage? An outstanding plan put together by the City Council. And then finally, the mayor recently has come out with his budget, and in his new budget, he mentioned that there's going to be almost a total of around 4,000 people laid off. And people were asking the questions with, how come, why do we get such wildly skewed numbers, 3,000, 8,000, 4,000, 6,000? He said, "We go with the information that we were given." So when he was given the information back in 2008, in 2006, that the city was going to be in financial difficulties, why the hell did he give raises to the unions?
Anker Patel is our next speaker, and after Mr. Patel will be Matt Dowd. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Anker Patel, and I'm a concerned citizen. Now, there is discontent among the people. The people are discontent because we have a mayor who is more willing to cut funding to libraries and parks than his own personal staff. Right, the mayor's department, the salary is $21 million. The councilman's department also has a salary of $21 million. Austin Butner, the new interim manager of the DWP, was a deputy mayor of Antonio Viegosa. You guys need to look into that. There are some connections there that are very fishy, at the very least. Now, Council President Garcetti and Perry are on record as saying that you don't trust the DWP. We don't know what they're doing. They have many projects, and they list these projects by one line. They have a number, a reference number. They say, "Information Technology, $16 million," and then they have a reference number. These reference numbers, if we made them more accessible, we would know what these projects are about. And throughout the budget, they have hundreds of projects with reference numbers, one line, without any detail. If you're talking about transparency, we need to get a hold of these reference numbers, and get more information on these projects that they're running. Now, again, the City Council has 108 approved positions. I don't know what that means. I thought I only, as a voter, we only approved 15 positions. These other positions should be made public and visible. So now I call on you councilmen to, how about, let us know who your staff is, how much they're getting paid, what their duties are, because we can't ask the mayor that, because he's just going to say no. Now, out of you councilmen, maybe one of you guys would have the guts to make your own staff transparent to the people, because that's what we want. We want to see who's representing us, what they're doing, how they're helping us, because it's not the job of the government to employ people. It's the job of the government to make sure that private companies create employment, to govern the competition, to make sure that it is fair.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Matt Dowd is our last speaker for general public comment.
Yes, thank you, Matt Dowd. We're on Channel 35. All the children, you can wave, you're on TV right now, just wave, it's okay. Thank you. It's my time, I can do that.
Go ahead, Mr. Dowd.
Thank you. I'm Matt Dowd. I've got a federal case, in fact, two federal cases against the city of Los Angeles. The first one is five years old coming up. It's over my incentive. Here's the case number. It's on my new banner, which will be at Venice Beach. That's my new banner, my own design, creative design, children. If you do creative design and you go out on Venice Beach, the police come and arrest you now. I've got 14 arrests for Pacific Breeze, and then for playing guitar, being artistic, is a crime in the city of Los Angeles, and I've been arrested 14 times over it. See, but that's not a big issue, I don't even want to talk about that. I want to talk about the problems that the city is giving these children. See, the city doesn't have any money. There's no nest egg. They don't have any money. Right now, they owe $4 billion in debt, which is the worst form of poverty, children, let me tell you. Make a nest egg, save money, stay away from the big banks, because right now, see, let me talk about that, the city of Los Angeles, they used to have a piggy bank with $5 billion of all the retirement money, but they got scammed by Wall Street, and the credit-- of all the retirement money, but they got scammed by Wall Street, and the credit ratings, they're trying to blame the credit ratings, but the credit ratings, and listen to the City Council, the credit ratings, because you're involved in this, the credit ratings were with those banks that were too big to fail. That's why they got the good rating, because they were too big to fail. Now, what you need to do is get AEG in here, because they're broke. Morello Maddox just had to sell their big condo tower at a massive loss, the city's broke.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd, that's your last public comment. And Mr. Coretts, if you'd like to make an introduction of the fine young students that are here?
Well, although they already got partially introduced, I'd like to introduce the 3rd grade class, room 12 and 13, from Wonderland Elementary. If you could all stand up, we'll recognize you. And Wonderland is a school that's known for its activism on important issues, and they've done a very well-known video on saving funding for education, so we welcome the wonderful kids from this terrific school.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coretts. If we can go to the items we were holding on the desk for 12 members, the first four items first?
Actually, Mr. President, there's a card on item 1, so it'll be items 2, 3, 4, and 10.
Okay. If nobody wishes to call those special, let's open the roll on those, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, that is approved. Let's take up item 1. John Walsh, if you'd like to come forward on item number 1.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Students, I remember substituting at Wonderland, I'm substituting at about 150 schools, LAUSD. How many, when you see those lights in your street, the city gives you those lights for your tax money, and they do a very, very good job. But how many students in this class, these classes, think that illegal drugs like marijuana and heroin are bad? Raise your hand. Well, you know, these politicians will have a ballot measure, the voters will be able, in November--
Sir, we have the street lighting before us today?
They will be able to legalize marijuana, and they'll go and try to make you--
Mr. Walsh, we're happy to have those comments in general public comment.
--stopping me from talking this way, because they're on the sides of the drug--
I'm sorry, sir, this is your last warning, we have a street lighting ordinance that's before us, and that's what we're talking on. Thank you. We're out of order.
You are on the favor of marijuana--
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. That will close our public hearing on this item. Just a review, just a review for both our students that are here and everybody else, some who know this rule well. The State Brown Act says that for items that are before us, we can only discuss those items. In general public comment, Mr. Walsh, your questions would be welcome. And if I could ask folks in the audience to please lower their voices, thank you. Please open the roll on item 1, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item 11, called Special for Cards.
All right, next we have item 11 before us. I'd like to call Mr. Arnold Sacks forward on item number 11.
Item number 11, good morning, thank you. Item number 11 is dealing with a street light, maintenance for the C and Figueroa Street Lighting District. It states that the Bureau of Street Lighting reports that if adopted, $12,700 will be collected annually, starting with tax year 2010, 2011. So I was wondering if the people who live in, are gonna be taxed in this district, can get the same kind of deal as the DWP got to pay the city? The DWP is paying a lump sum of money in lieu of property taxes, that's what the $73 million that we were talking about. So can the public get involved in the same kind of program where they don't have to pay property taxes, and they can, in lieu of their lighting district bill? Because I'm sure that they would like to be able to pick a sum that would be relative to their benefit, and pay it to the city like DWP. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks, that'll close our general public comment for that item. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 12, called Special for Cards.
All right, item 12 is next before us. John Walsh, if you'd like to come forward. This is on the street lighting at Lancashire and Killian.
One minute. Hollywood Highlands, come to my website, HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org. Again, this is maintenance of Killian Street and Lancashire Boulevard, lighting district. You see the police, they're your friends. They're not harassing me, are they, when I talk about lights? But the minute I say drugs are bad, these politicians up there, they'll have me arrested. Because we have a big, big vote, where we're gonna let drug dealers--
Sir, if you can pause this time, please.
--your brothers and sisters--
Sir, you--
See, I don't wanna get arrested--
Not only will we not silence you, you can absolutely say that for two entire minutes in our general public comment. So we invite you to do that every single meeting, but we have to speak on the street lighting item, under state law that is before us. Thank you very much. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. And Mr. Walsh--
14 ayes.
If you aren't able to contain yourself, I'm gonna ask you to leave if you can't contain yourself. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 13, called Special for Cards.
All right, item 13 is next before us. Matt Dowd, item 13.
Yes, so I'm gonna talk about the street lighting districts, and what this is for the children to understand too, is the city charges the residents a fee so they can maintain all their streetlights. But here's what's happening in the city, is that the streetlights will not be repaired, the streets won't be repaired, because the mayor is intent on only keeping services in the city that raise revenue, because that's a fundamental necessity. No, it makes sense, if you've got no money, and you're $600 million in the red every year, because the pension money has to be paid, then naturally, we're gonna chop libraries, kiddies, we're gonna chop the libraries first, you can check, they've already done it, we had all the librarians in here, I talked about it. But the street lighting thing that we'll get back to now, that's not gonna happen, the maintenance. So the best thing is for the people in the community to vote no for these, because the city, until it restructures its financial problems, and the global, you know, you all fell into it, we told you not to follow all the other cities, we warned you about the subprime market, it was all a big scam, and we said, "Don't invest in downtown, don't go to the, no one wants to live here, the affordable thing's not gonna work."
You could bring it back to the lighting district, please.
And after all the loss, the things they're gonna suffer, the streetlights, and the street maintenance, and the police eventually are gonna suffer too. But they're gonna take all your trash collection money, so the trash is not gonna get picked up, because we need the police first. So just get ready for police only, and all the people out there, don't expect the city to clean things up. It's time you get out on your own street and clean up the street for yourself now, for once, because you voted these people in, they're the bad politicians, and they wrecked it, and it's over.
Thank you. Just a reminder that if we can keep things to what is before us, and the street lighting, by the way, is paid for, just a point of information, independent from the general fund, this is a self-assessment on the, by the property owners. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote, as is the maintenance.
14 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 14, called Special by Councilmember Perry, and an amending motion has been circulated, and there are cards on that.
All right, Ms. Perry, do you wanna hear the cards first? We have four cards from the public?
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Donna Perman is our first speaker in Van Nuys. Good morning again.
Yeah, good morning. CRA has $615 million, and it's growing. They have enough to pay for all the green projects, so people won't have to do it on the race for DWP. I don't trust the CRA, they're only out for themselves and for glory. They all want their projects to go along with these green, urban, green, sustainable communities. They will get those extra projects, so people can see those green sustainables from office buildings, condos, and affordable housing apartments. They will not have enough only for these green sustainable, they will only, not have enough only for those green sustainables, which will come out of their budget. But the projects around it, they will ask and receive from the City Council. Haven't people learned yet about the community redevelopment agents, you see, the CRA? Of course, they'll get help from the City Council, they must do things to help councilman's legacy. Yet sometimes they do good things, but at what cost? It proves to be a lot of money for grant consultants, when our city is in deficit. We don't choose of these projects, we don't get, we don't choose if these projects are what we want, or is another useless study to archive in somebody's portfolio, you ask me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. Arnold Sacks is next, after that will be John Walsh.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. CRA, that's an oxymoron. Increase the authority to award contracts to the pre-qualified pool of grant consultants by $400,000. Why was this necessary? From $900,000 to $1,300? So if you award two contracts, that's for 10,000, $1,300,000, that's 26,000, that's $2.6 million. What happened to the $38,000? Is that for lunch? But, in addition, this urban greening for sustainable communities, how does that relate to the mayor's initiative for a Million Trees? Where are you with the Million Tree Initiative? Have you reached 100,000? Have you reached 200,000? Have you reached 10,000? Where is the standing of the Million Tree Initiative? And yet you're going on with the urban greening for sustainable communities, CRA is gonna get that money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. John Walsh is our next speaker, Matt Dowd will follow him.
Pass.
Okay, Mr. Walsh passes on this one, Mr. Dowd?
Yeah, I'll wave for this one, thank you.
All right, Mr. Dowd passes as well, that will close the public hearing. Ms. Perry, I'd like to recognize you on this item now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, this is just a technical amendment, that's all. And I would ask my colleagues to join me in moving the chief legislative analyst report and adopting that, as amended.
Thank you. All right, with that as amended, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
We'll send that forthwith, without objection. Next item, please.
Item 15, called Special for Cards.
All right, Mr. Dowd, on item 15.
Yes, worth a minute on this one, talk about Bill Rosendahl. And this is something he's doing to the Venice community, so I might as well, at Channel 35, know about it. We have to cut the funding for the Oakwood Recreation Center. Is this right? From 182,000 to 75,000. So the cuts are coming everywhere, and we warned about it. And there's another cut I wanna request, is cut out asking me about Zuma Dog, just make him a PayPal donation, and anything you wanna know. Everyone comes up to me, "Oh, Zuma Dog, this Zuma Dog, that." No, PayPal him, and he'll talk to you, for sure.
Sorry, sir, that's not under our jurisdiction, but thank you. That will close our public comment. Item number 15 is before us, any members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's go ahead and prepare the roll. Please tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 16, called Special for Cards.
Okay, Mr. Sacks, Arnold, number 16, and then John Walsh will follow.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. I imagine this item reimbursing the Los Angeles Department of Transportation for traffic management has something to do with the fact that last year, the council acted to rescind the special status for the seven arenas in LA that were getting free traffic management for events. But they never mentioned how much that money was amounted to. So, since Staples Center, and since the Coliseum, and since Dodger Stadium, and since the Hollywood Bowl, and since Galen Center, and since the Sports Arena, are no longer special status, how much do they pay for traffic management? We know that a farmer's market costs like $1,300, and a fair, a street fair might cost about $1,100. But we don't know how much it costs for traffic management at Staples Center. Can't you tell us? Don't you know? I mean, it was eight years, no, it was longer than that, it was nine years before you acted, three budget deficits, and you finally decided to act. I think the public deserves to know how much money was given away, all in the name of championships, and cut services, and reduced hours, and furloughs, and on and on, and yet we don't. You can list special events, but you can't list that. Why are you hiding those numbers? Don't you think the public is big enough to accept the fact that they got screwed?
Thank you very much. John Walsh is our next speaker. All right, he passes, Matt Dowd?
Yes, another triumphant victory, and I'll take a minute. Accepting money for all the parking services that Tom LeBonge probably was giving away for free for years, the Dodgers, and Nokia, Staples Center, Hollywood Bowl, the Greek Theater, Los Angeles Coliseum, Sports Arena, let's give them parking, this is the great city of LA. Los Angeles needs all these things, let's give them. And now finally, we said, "Hey, we need to get the money," and now we're getting it. So here's 750,000, which is nice, because you need it, there's an injunction coming out, and a lot of settlements, and court things are gonna need to be settled with me and a bunch of other people, so I'm glad we're getting the parking money. And another point I wanna make is, please don't sell the parking revenue, we're trying to tell you the basic fundamentals here, don't sell the golden goose, fool.
That will close our public comment. If there are no members in the council, let's go ahead, Mr. LeBonge.
Thank you. I'd like to have staff come to the table. Mr. Willis, thank you for your service to the city, and I know you put this package together. The question is, I just wanted to ask you, how do you account for, do you get each facility, give a lump sum, or do they get an accounted bill for what they receive? Like, there's 14 traffic officers around Dodger Stadium, or the Hollywood Bowl, or the Coliseum, do you give them an accounting, or do they, how do you keep that in line?
Yes, Alan Willis from the Department of Transportation. We send every venue detailed invoice, showing how many, what people work, how many hours they work, what the rate of pay was, and they're required to reimburse us for their salaries.
Great, so they get a, but they've paid you right now?
Yes, yes.
This is accepted, but for each event that comes forward, they will get a detailed invoice?
Yes, some of them are required, for example, because the Convention Center and Sports Arena did not negotiate a reimbursement agreement with us, where we could bill them later, what they do is, they have to give us a deposit in full upfront, before we'll even work the event, and then we give them a detailed--
And that's the Sports Arena, and what else?
And the Coliseum.
And the Coliseum, okay.
And then, and then we still send them a detailed invoice, showing what our actual costs were, and we refund any unused portion of that deposit.
And also, are we seeing private services being hired? I see that near Staples Center sometimes, do you see that at all?
Yes, part of the agreements that we negotiated with the Staples Center and others, gave them the opportunity to substitute qualified--
Special events people who would do this, which is very good.
For DOT staff.
And the issue with the buses on Highland Avenue, how have you been able to observe that, or your staff, or do you know? I know it's early in the season, they haven't started the Philharmonic yet, season, but--
Right, so we haven't really seen some good events to sort of like assess that, but the thing that we're looking at is that we've reviewed their plan, they are pulling the necessary street closure permits required by city ordinances, and so everything appears to be in order with their plan.
And they get a full accounting invoice?
Yes, they do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Willis. When's your last day in City Hall?
Looks like it'll be June 4th.
June 4th, you wanna say, you gonna come back before then?
What?
If you're gonna come back, you gonna come back before the June 4th?
Only if they need me for budget.
If you wanna say anything, I have another 23 seconds.
During budget hearings, I'm sure we'll see much of it. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're gonna miss you, first of all, Alan, you've been a tremendous contributor, it's one of the things I don't like about E-RIP, is a lot of good people are leaving us, and you're one of them. What we-- of good people are leaving us, and you're one of them. What we did here, so the public understands, is go to the different venues, and that is Dodger Stadium, Staples Center, Nacire Theater, LA Live, Hollywood Bowl, Greek Theater, and the Los Angeles Coliseum, and the Sports Arena. Now, you negotiated these relationships to the tune of $750,000?
Yes, that's an approximate figure, yes.
And if it does, and first of all, congratulations on doing that. A year ago, we had trouble for them even telling us to go pound sand. And then we didn't give up, because this is obviously, in addition to everything else, we need to keep them successful in traffic control workout and all that. And I'm very grateful they've come up with the money. Do you think this is enough, $750,000?
This is enough to cover the period from October 15th of 2009 through the end of this fiscal year. I'm currently preparing long-term agreements for all of these venues, and that's something that I hope to submit to council so they can approve an ongoing thing, and that'll be, I guess, my legacy to the city.
Well, one of your legacies. There's a lot of legacies you have, and we appreciate what you've done in the 11th district. But say, for instance, Dodger Stadium, it's $325,000. That could change, right?
It's, it's an approximate figure between now and between October and June 30th. They still have the balance of their season to go after July 1st, and that's what the longer-term agreement will address.
And in your discussions with them over these particular fees, like the Greek Theater $25,000, they're aware that we're coming back to try to create contracts that last more than just six months or a year?
Right, and most of them actually, especially the seasonal venues like the Greek Theater, Hollywood Bowl, and Dodger Stadium, want an agreement that at least spans the two fiscal years, in other words, covers their entire season from the spring to the fall. And we said, well, let's make it a longer-term one that they can be renewed periodically by the council.
And thank you very much. And it is revenue generating. It's going into our general fund, right?
It's actually coming out of our general fund budget and going back into our overtime account to replace that money.
So that's how you're going to move the monies around? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. With that, let's go ahead and please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item nineteen, call special for cards.
Dr. Clyde Williams is our first speaker on item nineteen. Is Dr. Williams here? Okay, John Walsh, item nineteen.
One minute. John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org for the latest on Obama. Heckler Gate. Remember, I'm not against the city. This is an excellent program. Arbor Day, unfortunately, about, that will be May 1st. Also, International Workers' Day. I don't think you'll be celebrating that up here since you're all right-wing. About as many city trees die every day as American soldiers die in Iraq and Afghanistan. You have a poor, poor record of trying to keep these trees alive. And we would like to say that we want an anti-Nazi Day on the same day. I know it's controversial. I know you're Nazi tolerant, and you're going to be coming back here, I understand. And I want to know how much Arbor Day costs the city. I'd say probably nothing, while the anti-Nazi Day, the pro-Nazi Day costs us $1 million. HollywoodHighlands.org for what's happening in this city.
Thank you. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. You have one minute left, sir?
Yes, thank you. The Arbor Day, May 1, see, it's a joke. I was here in 2006, well, years ago. We're talking about the million trees, and, you know, prophetically, we said it'll never work, and it didn't. You know, I came off the 10 freeway this morning on Maple, you know, and it's ugly. This city is so ugly downtown right now. It's, you know, and you've got this Arbor Day. What a joke. There's like, there's no trees in the city. It's just all ugly concrete and empty and trash and skid row and slime and grease and dirt. And, and, you know, that's the good news. The bad news is not going to get cleaned up because the city's broke, the pension, Laces lost all the money. That's all gone, and the street services are over.
Thank you. Dr. Williams, we called your name. I know you stepped out. If you'd like to speak on this.
I thought fourteen, fifteen would take longer. On Dr. Clyde Williams, Elsorino, Northeast LA. Arbor Day. It's a great concept. However, in the real world, a 28-inch diameter California bay, California native plant, tree, 28 inches in diameter, like one of these posts, was cut down on a private lot, even though the city urban forestry unit knew that it was being cut down. Could they penalize the owner? No, because they just couldn't get there fast enough. So enforcement. Arbor Day is nice. You see all sorts of lovely events, but on a day-to-day basis, trees are being cut down. Every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, the Board of Public Works has tree removal permits. What do they do? They require two trees for each one. That is, if it's 28 inches in diameter, eh, a two-inch tree will be replanted for it. Times two. Okay, maybe times four. So what are we coming up with? Oh, the million trees? If you had to put in a million trees, you need 20,000 trees in place each year to meet the requirement for a million trees. Right now, street services, parks, and that, everybody put together are doing around 16,000. So forget about million trees. It doesn't exist. Forget about Arbor Day, because we can't even enforce the current regulations that we have right now and penalize those people who would cut down a 28-inch California bay.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other members from the council wishing to be heard? Not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item twenty, call special for cards.
Arnold Sachs, item twenty. Sorry, sir. Did you want to speak on it? Are you waving? I can't hear you. You have one minute left, sir, on item twenty.
Thank you again, Arnold Sachs. The infamous Dim Jim. From the same Dim Jim that was awarded the contracts at the airport. And that budget has ballooned from $3 billion to $5 billion to $8 billion. The same Dim Jim that had to have two hearings to get nominated. First, a 4-1 vote against Dim Jim, and then miraculously, even though she had nothing to do in, the airport commission, the airport director, sitting in on the second meeting, and we know she had nothing to influence because she was here, and the city council grilled her. They asked her name. She got it right, and the questions. But the 4-1 vote against was changed to 5-0. The same Dim Jim. This is going to be a wonderful project. I can hardly wait to see how much this is going to increase by.
Mr. John Walsh is next on item number twenty. After that will be Michael Christensen in the Valley.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org and RecallCityHall.org. Say it 240,000 times. It's a website that rhymes. Recall City Hall, Recall City Hall. It actually means recall the mayor. But the issue here, incidentally, the harbor, you're doing a wonderful job there. Dim Jim is, they're the people who manage the subway. Go out and take a look at the subway from hell to the sea, and you'll see that it's falling apart. HollywoodHighlands.org. And I'd just like to point out, when I spoke out against legalization of marijuana, it wasn't the city attorney who was against the law, the initiative. It wasn't the city attorney that stopped me from speaking to the children. It was Eric Garcetti, who is in favor of legalization of marijuana, because he wants--
He is way off topic here.
Thank you, sir. That will close our comments on that item, except for Michael Christensen in San Pedro. Excuse me, not the Valley. Good morning, Mr. Christensen.
Good morning, President Garcetti, members of the council.
Hold on one second. We can hear you.
Deputy Executive Director at Harbor Department.
Hold on one second, sir. We want to see if we can get the video up. If not, we'll at least be able to hear you, but we can't see you right now. Just hold on two seconds, and we'll see if there's technical difficulties. Okay, there's no video in San Pedro, but we will be able to hear you. Sorry, Mr. Christensen. We'll start your clock again if you'd like to go ahead.
Michael Christensen, Deputy Executive Director of Harbor Department from San Pedro. My purpose for submitting a speaker card was to present myself in case there are any questions from council members concerning this item.
Okay, great. Thank you. We'll just stand by there, and we'll let you know if there's any questions for you. Mr. Weezer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I had asked that we continue this item about a week ago, because this item is asking for two things. One is to amend the name of the contractor, and the other is to extend the contract for one year without cost to the city. So if Mr. Christianberry, I think is his name, if he could answer, how we, how are we extending this contract with, for one year with this contractor with no cost to the city? Hello, did you hear my question, sir?
Yeah.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead. We can hear you now.
The, this contract builds the Newport Police Building, which has incurred some scheduled delay. The scope of the work is unchanged for this contractor, and as such, there is no budget increase. So the contractor will continue and complete their performance with no additional funds, or with no additional budget, I should say.
Sir, how do we pay for construction management services? Are they by hour? Are they annually? If they are by hour, how are they going to perform for another year without charging the city?
The services are rendered per the scope of the agreement, and if the scope, basically are individual items of lump sum payment. And so long as they, we keep the scope the same, it does not change the cost of the services.
And how long, how many people are going to be working or providing these services for a year from this firm?
First, sir, the, they will not all be extended a year per se. The contract term will be extended a year. There are anywhere from a half a dozen to a dozen construction management personnel involved at any given time in the project. And the extension of the delivery of the services will not be for, for a full year. They'll simply be extending a few months. We anticipate occupancy of the building about three to four months later than what we had originally envisioned.
If it's for a few months, why did you ask for a year? And how many hours is this firm going to donate to the city to complete this?
I'm not sure I understand your question, sir, about the donation.
Two questions. Number one question, you're asking us to extend this contract for one year, and you are now telling me that it's only for a couple of months. So why not tell us in the report that you only need it for a couple of months and not a year? That's question number one. Question number two is how many hours of construction management services will this firm donate to the city, since you're telling me it's at no cost to the city?
The first question is, they, the extension of the occupancy date is about four months. The reason we asked for a year was because there will be closeout items that will extend beyond the occupancy date. And those will happen on an as-needed basis. Those will occur throughout the, throughout the months following. We are quite sure we finished prior to a year, but we didn't want to have to come back again for another extension. In terms of donation, this firm will do however number of hours they need to do to complete the tasks that they agreed under the contract. If you'd like, I could come up with an estimate of the number of hours that they're planning on spending, but they're required to fulfill the scope of their agreement regardless of the number of hours it takes them to do it.
Got it. So it's about four hours until you get the certificate of occupancy. It could be more to finalize the whole project, and that's why you asked for a year. If you could please forward that information to, to my office and our council members as to how many hours you expect this firm to complete this job. I, I just thought it was interesting that there will be no charge to the city when we are extending a contract for one year. But if you're telling me that most of the work is four months, and that's when you get the certificate of occupancy, that makes a lot worse sense than a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, I just want to maybe clarify too. How is this paid for? Who pays the bills for this contract?
The bills for the construction--
Is it the city general-- Is it City General Fund, or is it, is it revenue from the port?
The costs for the construction and construction management of the Port Police Building are paid from the Harvard Department's proprietary funds. They do not affect or come from in any way the general funds of the city.
Right, and I think that's always important to note, that this money does not come from the general fund, is not taxpayer dollars. And of course, this is a port police building. We know that we have increased the ranks of our port police officers since 9/11. We know that still the Port of Los Angeles is always one of those that's on the top 10 list for a potential attack. And we know that they have been operating out of very poor conditions at the Port of Los Angeles. This is a building that I think we have wanted for a long time. It makes sense. It's going to be state-of-the-art, and it will, I believe, allow them to really perform their duties in a way that lives up to the challenge that I think we ask of them every single day. So I've had this in committee, and I would ask you colleagues to support this today.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, and thank you, as always, for your leadership at the port. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 21, call special for cards.
All right, we have a number of speakers. We have five speakers. I'd like to start with Joe Linton. Thank you for your patience. Good to see you.
Hi, Joe Linton, bicycle advocate. I just, there's motions about the bike corrals. I just want to say bike corrals are good for business. You can get more customers parking a dozen bikes in the space of one car parking space. Good for pedestrians, who get bikes off the sidewalk. And this pilot one will be at no cost to DOT. We're getting funding from the neighborhood council and from private donors. And I just want to thank Councilmember Hweezer for his leadership on this, and Adele Viscar Barton, or Adele Viscar for his aid for assisting us. Thanks.
Thank you. Matthew Shador?
Hi, my name is Matt Shador. I'm a small business owner in Highland Park. I, I live and work in Highland Park. My wife and I have a small coffee shop, and we wanted to hopefully have this bicycle crow. It'll be the first one in Los Angeles in, near our coffee shop, in front of our coffee shop on York Boulevard. We want to thank the council member for her support on this. We think it's going to, we know it's going to create a safer and better bicycling environment for all the folks in Highland Park and surrounding neighborhood in Northeast LA. And we also have the support of our Highland Park Neighborhood Council, unanimous support of the Highland Park Neighborhood Council, the president of the nearby Occidental College. And Occidental College is like six blocks from us, less, four, five blocks. Our, our building owner, who's also our landlord and the president of the Chamber of Commerce of Highland Park, supports us. The owners of a number of local businesses, and of course, the citywide bicycle associations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ramon Martinez is our next speaker. After that is John Walsh.
How's it going, council? I wanted to speak in support of this motion. Ramon Martinez, I work with the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition. This motion has only made it this far because of the awesome support from Councilmember Hweezer's office, Councilmember Rosendahl. We've had great support from Transportation Deputy Adele Viscar. And as Matt said, the support of the community. Matt's the small business owner in which this bike crowd is going to go right in front of. The property owner is in support of this. The neighborhood council is in support of this. We've just seen huge, a huge wave of support for this motion, so I ask that council support it. As well, I wanted to remind council about the broken window theory. And this is, this is a concept that I learned from New York City's Department of Transportation, and, and something that they learned from, from our former, you know, chief of police, which is that if we have simple things like bikes that are getting stolen, and we don't even have places to park them, you know, conveniently and effectively and efficiently, then we're losing out on the larger battle on, on creating a livable city, and creating a healthy city, and creating a safe city. And so if little things like this that are cheap and effective and can just go in pilot project style-- project style can be really, really, really powerful in creating that safe city that we all want to see. So again, I ask for your support and thank everybody for getting it this far. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Martinez. John Walsh is our last speaker. You have one minute left, sir.
I have one minute of life left. HollywoodHighlands.org and RecallCityHall.org. One hundred percent in favor of the Bike Coalition? Bike Co, every person on a bike is another reason why we don't need rail. They get where they want to get on their own. I'm very upset about the number-two person at Laydot. And thanks to Councilmen Weezer and Labange. Number-two piece person at Laydot underneath Ms. Robinson is a man named John E. Fisher. He's very anti-bike. He's been very nasty and he should get some attitude correction and realize who he works for. Now remember, this is the only city in LA County, eighty-eight cities, that makes you wear a tag. So I'm wearing a tag with a Jewish star on it because in my grandmother was named Bertha Berger. She was a Jew. And at this, at this.
He's not talking about this item.
Okay, antisemitism.
Thank you very much. That will close our comments on that item. Mr. Weezer is our first speaker on this. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First, I want to thank the speakers who came out to support this motion and not only for your work today, but for your work throughout this process to allow us to get here. It is through your activism, advocacy, and involvement that we've been able to do this as well. I also want to thank the Transportation Committee, Mr. Rosenthal, Corretts, and Mr. Labange for supporting this and the Transportation Committee. Councilmembers, this is a very unique thing we're doing here. There are no bike corrals in the city of Los Angeles. This will be the first and we're doing it on a pilot basis so that eventually and hopefully we could expand the corrals, bike corrals throughout the city of Los Angeles. We expect that this would be a success and people will want to have their own, whether it's my colleagues in their council districts or other businesses throughout the city because they're going to see how efficient, environmentally friendly, and good for business that the corral, bike corral can be. What we are doing here is to put a bike corral in front of Cafe de Leche, a coffee shop in Highland Park that will allow for the parking of anywhere between ten to twenty bicycles. We understand that the business owner is supporting this through some of his funds, their funds, and that eventually, hopefully, Department of Transportation could find additional funds should we expand this. It's no cost to the city. This is a good private, public partnership. And again, we are hoping to not only help with the promotion of bicycle riding in the city of LA, but when you make it more convenient, both for businesses and customers alike, that's when people are going to start using bicycles more often. So thank you so much and I ask for your input on this. And again, thanks for everyone who came out here today and for your work. And I look forward to riding my bike there to get my cup of coffee on a Saturday morning. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, just a quick comment. It's kind of shocking that it's the first. And let's just hope this is the beginning of these corrals throughout the city. I want to thank Matt, the owner, for encouraging it and working with us and making it happen. Obviously, I want to thank the staff for the fine work they did on it, but this is a new day for us in the city of Los Angeles. Finally, bicycling is getting the respect, at least at that spot. The Bicycle Bill of Rights needs to move forward. We need to do whatever we can with Measure R, the five to ten percent flexibility for bike paths. This is all the beginning of everybody getting on a bike. And I intend one of these days to get on one and ride and put my bike in a corral and have a cup of coffee somewhere along Venice Boulevard, which is where we have some of the shops already locating. And I look forward to seeing bike corrals there. Thank you, Mr. Weezer, for your leadership on it. Thank you, community, for coming out. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
I also want to rise and thank Councilmember Weezer and the folks who are involved in Highland Park regarding this great step. Your colleagues incrementally, as Councilmember Rosendahl is saying, slowly but surely, we're beginning to bring to light the advantage of a bicycle infrastructure, of bike paths. I mean, when we look at our rail stations, our transit-oriented districts, we start accepting the fact that we had lockers for bicyclists, we had places to secure our bikes, we have ways to rent bikes for one-way trips where we can just drop them off and let someone else use it. And actually start identifying our corridors that should be safer based on injuries and incidents. These are the types of incremental steps that we need to take and they're actually occurring. But the sad reality is, we have a staff of maybe two or three now, about three. We have four engineers now in Department of Transportation for a city of over three million. And that hurts us because it's hard to move these great concepts into reality. About four years ago, you supported and we passed a demonstration project for District One and how we can look at corridors, create bike boulevards, and actually create safe passages for bikes. And it still has yet to be realized because of the overwhelming work that would take and the lack of staff that we have in promoting and actually implementing these policies. So I want to thank those who are here today. Don't lose heart, don't give up. It's still a long journey. When that riverway becomes a major bike way for all the communities in the city, we can extend it to all the major destinations through a safe bike route. I think our grant attorney will be thanking us for this effort. So thank you very much.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Wish us luck, great luck as it is a new innovation. I also want to put a shout out to the Nogura family, which has owned this quarter of Highland Park for years and years and the late, great Mike Nogura, who is a great citizen of Los Angeles. Now his daughter runs the business there. So it's a very special day as we move forward. Congratulations to all those who have been involved. I didn't ask anything for the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Alakon.
Councilmembers, I would like to support this, but I just wanted to call your attention to an article in today's LA Business Journal written by Joseph Bray Ali, who is the son of my chief of staff, Said Ali. And it's putting parking in its place. He is an avid bicyclist and I just want to point it out so that my chief of staff will like me that much more, but also so that you can read this article. It's exactly on point. Talks about creating opportunities, not just things like bike corrals, but it talks about planning for bicycling and changing the culture of development as we know it to be more capable of encouraging bicycling in Los Angeles. It's a good article. I just recommend you read it. LA Business Journal. And I'm sure my chief of staff can get you a copy if you need one.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. This matter has now been forced for a vote. Colleagues, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Matter passes. Ms. Perry, do you have a comment? Okay, I saw you standing. I thought you may. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, there is a special one and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney on special one, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has notified city staff of the need for a council motion to direct the Department of Transportation to close parking lot number seven-five-three so that the LAPD could use the lot as a logistics area for the May Day event. Immediate action is required to direct DOT before the event. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
On the findings? Anyone on the findings? All right. On the findings, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Very well, matter's now been forced. No comment, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
It is now passed. For the police to take care of that matter. Mr. Cardenas, do you have a question? Mr. Cardenas, you don't have a question. You had that puzzled look on your face. All right, next item, please.
Mr. President, it does take care of the items on the regular agenda. Do you wish to recess the regular and go into the special?
Let's recess our regular meeting and go into the special meeting.
Alakon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weezer, Corretts, Kocoly, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, fourteen members present and a quorum.
Very well.
This is a one-item agenda. Item twenty-two is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration and there are amending motions, twenty-two A and twenty-two B that have been circulated.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This morning in Energy and Environment Committee, we did the clarifying motion in response to the latest action from the Department of Water and Power regarding the energy cost adjustment factor. And at the table, we had the chief legislative analyst, the chief administrative officer, and a representative from the Department of Water and Power. They're designated city attorney. And I think if I could just summarize, and why don't you guys, if Mr. Miller is here, I don't think the CIO is here, the attorney for the Department of Water and Power, if I could just summarize for the purposes of time. The reason I felt there was a need for clarification is because there was some question as to whether or not the last action by the Department of Water and Power meant that the rate increase was permanent. It was, in fact, permanent. If I could just again summarize, the current ECAF rate is five-point-zero-nine and in October the first, it then increases to five-point-seven-nine and that is a permanent rate increase. I'm sorry, six-nine. Six-nine, wow.
On July.
That would have been scary. Thank you for correcting me. You're absolutely right because that's right. You're right. Five-point-six-nine, October the first. And I felt it was important to clarify this on the record. Now, some of us did vote no on the affirmation motion that was sent back to the commission. I felt, and I can only speak for myself, I can't speak for others and I don't think that's appropriate, but that we had made an offer, the commission had rejected it. They could have initiated their own counterproposal, but they chose not to. And quite frankly, for those who did vote to do the reaffirmation in the hopes that it would create a good pathway for having a power revenue transfer, that has not yet occurred. And I want to note that for the record. Now, I had contemplated doing a two-forty-five on this today and we can see how it goes, but I do have a fallback position. And we can pursue that too. I'll see how many speakers are and then I'll cycle back.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Corretts.
Yeah, I know I'm not speaking for everyone, but I know the conversation around this item led at least me and I'm pretty sure some other council members to believe that this was a rate increase that would only be for one quarter and that would revert back to its original rate pending some actions by the DWP upon which we could decide to give future rate increases. How did that conversation occur that where there was very little discussion, if any, of this being a permanent rate hike and yet it turns out that it was? How do we wind up here?
Don't all speak at once.
Well, Mr. Corretts, the conversation from the beginning, the board action, the analysis the PA consulting presented to you, the joint report from the CEOCLA, all of that dealt with the allowable increase under the ECAF. None of that information presented to you contemplated that the rate would actually roll back. Now, I think it's important to understand what this ECAF cap increase means. The board can do a point-one increase per quarter. They don't have to make any findings. If the board goes above point-one cents per quarter, they do have to make a whole series of findings that it is necessary to go above the point-one cents in order to maintain their financial integrity. So what the board initially asked you to do is accept the findings that they had a necessity for a twenty-eight percent increase to maintain their integrity, even though the subsequent increases still had to be approved. What the council did is, and what PA recommended, is they did not accept that, the council did not agree to make those findings. The council agreed on the findings that they needed a first increase, in this case a point-six percent, and said, go back, make the findings again and give us the opportunity to have the transparency on your efficiencies, on your DSM program, on your RPS program before another increase. But at no point was there a discussion that the actual rate itself would roll back.
Well, maybe I'd have to go back to tapes and such, but I recollect that to be the conversation. And most of the conversation, I agree, was around these more ongoing increases, but that was around the recommendations. I don't think the council was understanding that they were going along with those recommendations. And in fact, the first motion which the DWP rejected, I thought was for only one quarter. And the language in this was very similar. There may have been a tiny difference that caused this, but I certainly thought what we first sent to the DWP and they turned down was absolutely only for one quarter. Otherwise, I don't think they would have turned it down. Am I wrong?
Well, again, you know, I can only speak to the information that was presented in that what the council turned down was the findings that they needed more than the first-quarter increase, but it was not an actual rollback of the rate. The discussion of what the impact would be, the four-point-eight percent, for example, that the council recommended to the board, that's an annual increase. If we were only talking about one quarter and that it would roll back, we would be talking about a one-point-two percent increase, not a four-point-eight-eight percent increase. So in terms of the context of the discussions and the impact on the ratepayers, it was all annualized and did not contemplate that the rate would be rolled back.
Well, all I can say is I think this is a surprise to more than one of us. And I would hope that the DWP would realize that some of us feel scammed and misled. And if they're ever looking for further rate increases or any other cooperation from us, they're going to have to address this in some way and not deal with it as if it's a permanent gift to them because it was never intended to be the case.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and Mr. Corretts. I think we all have plenty of evidence of feeling scammed and misled over the last few months. That said, my questions are for the city attorney and I think this will be an important point for council, which has voted many times on different ECAFs or has decided not at other times to two-forty-five them. First of all, can the council set rates? Does it have the power to set rates?
The board establishes rates and the council approves them by ordinance.
So we can, if we want then, approve or reject them, but we cannot set the rate level?
That is correct. The board is the rate-setting authority.
Is there anything that we can transmit which becomes an official transmittal that they act on on setting rates? Or can we only advise and they have to take an independent action?
Correct. There's an independent action. You can certainly advise and provide recommendations, but it is an independent action.
And that's important because I know a lot of the coverage was saying the council set it or we sent something to them which was a formal rate increase. We did not do that, nor do we have the power to do that, colleagues. Third question, does the Board of Water and Power on the ECAF have to calculate this each quarter?
That is correct. It is a, and I think that's an important distinction, councilmembers. There is a energy cost adjustment rate. And on a quarterly basis, you can make an adjustment to that rate. Under the current ordinance, you're only allowed to, and it's a mathematical equation, but you're only allowed an increase to that adjustment of point-one. And that's what we've been referring to in discussions here as the cap. The item that you passed allowed the increase of that cap, that quarterly cap, to point-six for the fiscal quarter from July first to September thirtieth.
But on October first, by ordinance, by law, the board has to recalculate the ECAF. If, in other words, if they want to keep that point-six, they have to calculate that again and we have the power to stop that if we want to two-forty-five that.
The point-six, actually, the cap increase of point-six expires on its own on September, after September thirtieth. So on October.
Did everybody hear that? It expires on its own on September thirtieth.
That's the cap increase. On October, on October first, you revert back to the cap increase of point-one. That is under the existing ordinance.
The way the ordinance is written, it's point-one. By the way, though, with the point-one, for instance, when the board did not decide to do the point-one, for whatever reason, they decided, they sent the whole thing back to us with point-seven. They also didn't pass a point-one. It didn't automatically go in, did it? The point-one?
That is correct.
So for anybody who's reporting or covering and saying, well, that automatically something kicks in, it cannot, it will not, and we have the power, if they do decide to find that point-six again, we have the power to two-forty-five it. I like the amendment. I like the amendment that Ms. Perry put in. I think she referred to it as a fallback position. It restates what we did. I would add something to strengthen that with her permission, if that comes up, which is to make sure that they report on September 1st, because that was some of the language of the original motion. I don't want to wait till October 1st, but if that's all right with you, to make sure they come in on September 1st. They're not obligated to do so, but for me to be able to vote for anything moving forward, I certainly wanted to see that they have some accountability, they have some transparency, that they have a plan, that they know what the renewables are going to be, that they have a ratepayer advocate in place. But if that could be accepted as a friendly amendment, would that be okay?
When I put it in.
Okay, when it gets put in? If it gets put in?
And if we put it in.
Good, okay. If it gets put in, I'd like to add that. But I'll just conclude on that. Folks, we have the power. It says right here, "The ECAF shall be calculated four times each year." If they don't calculate it, they don't get it. If they do calculate it, we have the power to stop it. And as the city attorney just said, it's crystal clear, they don't, that does not stay there. It resets back down, not to zero, but to the .1 that we've had in for some series of a year or so.
Correct. And again, that is the cap that reverts, not the rate.
And I understand the complications of this, folks. This is not easy policy stuff, but I hope that makes that crystal clear, what we did, where the power lies, and how we can continue to keep them accountable, because I certainly want to. This council does, and we will continue to have that power. It cannot be taken away by anybody.
Mr. President, for clarification, that September 1st date actually falls during the council's recess, the summer recess.
Then the first council meeting after September 1st.
Which would be September 7th.
Thank you.
Clarification. Mr. Cardness, you're up.
Point of clarification to Councilmember Garcetti. You want September 1st or the date that you just described, or on or before?
Well, I love on or before. Thank you for that clarification.
We'd love to see him before if they get a ratepayer advocate. I mean, if they're ready, like a month before, we don't want him to wait, right?
Sure, absolutely. Ms. Cardness, you're up.
Great. Thank you very much. To the three gentlemen that are sitting here, a question was asked about potentially being misled, or I forget what, one of my colleagues, the word that he used. But can any of you clarify, which one of you ever said to this council on the record, because you came and spoke on this matter on the record, many of you, on and off, over the many times we discussed rate increases over the last 60 days or so? Which one of you actually used the word temporary increase? You don't have to speak if you didn't say anything, because I don't remember any of you saying that, that it was a temporary increase.
Well, to be very clear, we may have used temporary increase in the cap, a temporary increase in the allowable increase, not a temporary increase in the rate.
Okay. Now, when it comes to the rate and the cap, did any of you ever tell the council that an increase, for example, on July 1st, or when we were contemplating April 1st, that that would actually go down after three months? That the actual rate that people were paying, the ratepayer was paying, was going to go down after three months?
No.
Did you tell us it was going to go down after two quarters, or three quarters, or four quarters?
No.
Okay. Whose job is it, or who takes the primary steps in order to take an action so that the rates can go down? Because we know technically, rates can go down, correct? They could, but it's not very likely. But they could technically go down, right? Like, the Department of Water and Power Board could actually take up an agenda item and actually reduce the actual rate?
Counsel, let me make two points on that. One, within the existing ordinance, the ECAF, it's a mathematical calculation, so if the numbers were there, it could technically go down. And in reality, those numbers, because of the cap, you won't get there, because you're under a collecting, that's just a mathematical possibility. But if you wanted to reduce the rate at some point, you could not do that under the existing ordinance. You would have to have another ordinance that would allow for that rate reduction.
Okay. So basically, what I'm getting at is, it's my understanding, after being approached by many people of the press or what have you, that perhaps there was some misleading going on, or perhaps what was said wasn't the truth, et cetera. But the bottom line is, after I read the latest motion the council put forth, and some people voted no, and some people voted yes, I personally read it many times. I asked my chief of staff to read it, and we dialogued. I said, "What do you think it says," et cetera. I went over the minutia of certain words and things of that nature. I talked to various individuals. I talked to you, and I talked to you, and I talked to many people about it, and then I voted on it. And I never, under any circumstances, thought that I was voting for something that was going to be a temporary three-month increase that was going to come back down, that the rate was going to come back down to the ratepayer, or over six months, or three quarters, or four quarters, or what have you. That was never my impression. However, one of the things that I personally did is I went ahead and read it myself. I made sure that people read it, whether I trusted the other people or what have you, I questioned them, and I asked what their interpretation was, what they thought this word meant, what they thought that word meant, what they thought the context of these words in the drafting of that motion looked like, et cetera. And then that's how we decided what to vote on. And I did vote, I did vote to increase the rate.
I like how you turn a meeting.
Mr. Labans.
Thank you very much, members. What disappoints me, and as a lifelong lover of Water and Power, is the process. And it's been very confusing to try to explain this to the public that we represent, and it's been difficult. And I've had a number of community meetings where people have not been able to understand this. We use terms, and everybody knows what the FBI is, everybody knows what the DWP is, but ECAF, they don't understand. In simple terms, it would be if I was saying that we have to pay for our costs to do our business, whatever our cost is. Your electric bill, is that right? Is that what it basically is, to bring power to Los Angeles?
Certain elements, yes, that's correct.
But explain it. See, there's the trouble. And this is what I'm disappointed, because I love Water and Power. You guys don't stand up and say exactly what it is, and what we have to do to bring the power to Los Angeles. And I hate to say "you guys," but it's a situation that I've always fought for Water and Power, but this time I can't fight for Water and Power, because I don't think you've explained it right. Because as we go talk to the people that we represent, they have difficulty totally understanding this. So would, please explain, this power that comes to here, that light up there, how's it get here? What does it cost? And what is this charge? Because the people pay for it, if you would, please.
Counsel member, with respect to the ECAF and general principles, it's for recovering cost of fuel purchased power, including renewable energy and demand-side management. If you wanted to get into the specifics of.
Well, that's real good there. The cost of purchasing power, the cost of, that's real good, to explain it.
Those are the general elements of the energy cost adjustment factor, and it recognizes that those costs fluctuate, so you have this adjustment factor that captures those fluctuations. That's in a simple lawyer's description, if you want.
Right. But some of the gas comes from El Paso, correct? If you could, would be graphic, it comes from West Texas, and the cost to bring it to Los Angeles, the natural gas. So that's what we're paying for, that's what this is about.
That's one element, correct.
Yeah, it's one element, and other elements as well, which I think we have to tell the people. Water and Power always told the story that people understood it and always supported it, but we have to tell that story. I mean, it is very important. And the other thing, too, members, I do only believe that this was an action that we could take up again in the fall, totally. I never believed it was permanent, when this was discussed at all. I never saw anything like that. So I want to support Ms. Perry, who's our chair, and I just want to rise. I always want to support Water and Power, but I have difficulty today supporting Water and Power, which is very difficult for me to do. Thank you.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, like Mr. Corretts, feel that I didn't understand it, or it wasn't explained properly. But all I got to look at is the motion, and this is what I signed off on, and it says, "Adopt a .5-cent kilowatt increase effective July 1 that allows the cap to be raised from .1 to .5 only for the fiscal quarter beginning July 1, 2010, to September 30." When I saw that word "only," I just assumed it was for that quarter, and that you would come back and explain all these things and clean up our act so that we're no longer in this credibility issue. I mean, the mayor brings in Austin Butner, a guy from the private sector, he's now going to try to reshape it and focus it. But frankly, maybe it's my naivete, I'm not as smart as Mr. Cardness, I thought that word "only" meant "only for that quarter." Explain that to me.
And it does mean "only for that quarter" with respect to the cap, as the motion language that the council passes, that allows the cap to be raised from .1. So it's the cap that's raised. What your existing ECAF allows, your ECAF allows a quarterly adjustment. Under the existing ordinance, you're allowed a quarterly ECAF adjustment. The ordinance provides that that adjustment shall not exceed the prior quarter's adjustment by more than .1, unless you get an increase to that allowable adjustment. And that's what the motion and the resolution did, was increase that allowable adjustment for that quarter only, so that that cap increases for the quarter, and then at the end of that quarter, your cap reverts back to your ordinance language of .1.
Now, I'll be honest with you, if I was watching this, I still don't know what the heck you just said. My bottom line was, I voted for one quarter in my mind, not for perpetuity, that one quarter. When John Schwatter, good journalist, sticks the mic in my face, he asked me that question. And that's the accountability of the media to us. At best, it was confusing. At worst, it was worse, obviously. So you're basically saying, "We approved for perpetuity that point what?"
You approved for one quarter the cap of .6. The rate that that cap adjusts goes on falling because it is a cumulative.
So that goes on, and then you can add to it?
Just as it's gone in the past, yes. You can add to it on a quarterly basis.
Why isn't somebody just talking simple language for a simple guy like me? So I understood it was more than a quarter that, though. I mean, I assumed it was just a quarter, as did Mr. Corretts, and I'm sure we're hearing a little bit from Mr. Labans, the side agent. Can we just make our language a little simpler so we understand it?
Again, we're doing it under the existing ordinance, so if, when we do the rate restructuring, that's certainly something that can be addressed.
Okay, look, somebody should say, "Under the existing ordinance, we're going to raise it this, and that will stay in perpetuity." But if you want to raise it above that, above that, you have to come back. That would have been the layman's language that a guy like me could have understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Alakha.
I call the question.
Questions been called. We have Ms. Perry, Mr. Corretts, and Mr. Garcetti on the queue. On calling the question, shall we open the roll? On calling the question. Open the roll, please. Close the roll, tabulate the roll.
Eleven ayes, three noes.
Questions been called.
We have a, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Perry.
We have a 245 before us.
Mr. President, there are cards on this matter. A public hearing was not satisfied in committee this morning.
Well, now, we will. I don't have any cards on that, to be fair to you.
Oh, great, okay.
Wait a second. Twenty-two? All right, I do have a couple. Dr. Williams. There's four cards, colleagues, four cards.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno, Northeast LA. As one board commissioner once said, "How can I explain it to my people when I can't understand it myself?" That was for the bill, just the bill, because nobody can understand it. Yes, ECAF is difficult. It wasn't difficult two years ago. It was for natural gas, and eventually, the cost of transporting of coal, fuel-related. And it was supposed to vary as those things went up. It's ministerial. Now, they've added so many other things to it that it effectively becomes a rate increase in perpetuity. These are caps, they are not the rate. So once you raise the cap, you allow each quarter the rate to increase without any discretionary action on the part of the Board of Water and Power, nor this council. So I wonder how the 245 can apply to simple regulatory ministerial actions on the part of our dear management of DWP. So I'm quite concerned about the new man on the block, who, hey, he has a profit motive. Let's make DWP even more profitable, so that you can get more money back to the city council. So I would highly recommend that you go back to what ECAF was two years ago, and make up the Board of Water and Power to actually establish rates for turbines, rates for solar, rates for coal replacement, each individually separated, so that we can see where we're going, and how much it's going to cost us, not necessarily this year, but how about in 2015, 2020? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Donna Perman in Van Nuys is next. Arnold Sacks will be next here in council chambers. Ms. Perman seems to have left. Come on forward. Don't worry, we see you, we see you. Go down.
Okay, sorry, I was on the phone. Anyway, we can't afford these DWP rates like we can't afford bus hikes. The public is having a lot of problems making ends meet, especially when you ask for sacrifice from city employees, except not DWP, which you got their raise. You want another DWP hike, when we had one recently, hits the middle class the most. You find ways to help the lower class and the people in apartments, but middle class gets hit extra hard. The city council apparently loves spending their money for their legacy, green projects. We don't get to see what we were paying. How will it help us specifically? When will it be enough? How do I know you want, you won't ask for more if it costs more than you think? Why doesn't the CRA Sustainable cover any of this? It's not right. Like, it's not right to have huge increases in metro passes, with MTA so broke. We can't afford to pay more for Garcetti's legacy. This is wrong to be asking for, people are having lots of problems right now, paying when they have furloughs, when they're losing money already, when they don't get their cost of living, and now you're asking for more money, huge increases in the DWP. This will hurt families, this will hurt people being able to live a life simply. So I don't see that we can afford these green projects, and we don't even know what we're paying for. Nowhere does it say what exactly is the green project, what exactly, how is it going to help us? They're trying to hide it from us, so we don't know exactly what they have planned, except whatever they have planned, and we have to pay for it, which I think is wrong. So I say no. Let's vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. Is Mr. Sacks with us still? Seems to have left. John Walsh is next. Under W.
See, the attorney is now my favorite person in the whole world. Let me tell you, one blogger recently said, @johnwalshholliwathilllands.org, that John Walsh is the conscience of LA. That shows you how screwed up the city is. Okay? Let's start with what really happened. You're not going to find the LA Times. You trusted the mayor, you trust the city council, you're the good guys. You trusted the mayor, the mayor lied to you. You look like fools. Now, he's done that to you 50, 60 times. Shame on you, not shame on the mayor. Is it the surprise to every taxpayer? First, it's temporary, then now it's permanent. You were scammed by the mayor. You were screwed by the mayor. Now, the answer is not recallcitycouncil.org, the answer is recallcityhall.org. I want you all to sign the recall petition. That's the way we can solve this problem. It is bloody unfair what he's doing. Metaphorically speaking, the city of Los Angeles is bleeding from a bodily orifice. Guess which orifice? The city ratepayers cannot sit for this. That should give you a hint on what bodily orifice the mayor attacked us on. I'm asking us to get together and get, the mayor has already been offered an ambassadorship by Obama if he wants to walk out. Everybody knows he's been offered an ambassadorship. HollywoodHighlands.org, if you want to find out what Sam Zell won't tell you, you come to our website. Thank you. Vote no. We don't want to bleed. We don't want to bleed. We cannot afford this rate hike. And I love the city council.
Daniel Weisman is our next speaker.
Thank you for the consideration, Mr.--
Can we sneak a little closer to the microphone so we can hear you? Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Three W's in a row, huh? Okay. You're very lucky this morning. DWP has been doing this to us over and over again. There's nothing wrong with improving the services the DWP can offer us. There's nothing wrong with trying to make this city green. There is something wrong with the way we've been presented with this information over and over again. Measure B, the base rate increase that we looked at several years ago. All of these came to us without adequate justification. What's the matter? Is truth something the DWP can't afford to spend? We've been fooled over and over again. 0.5 raise in E cap for the quarter starting July 1 could be another 0.5 in September 1, and another 0.5 in January 1. And those of you who are mathematically challenged, trust me. Exponential increases in anything is a very fast-moving product. Maybe the DWP does need it. They should tell us why and how. I'm with you, Mr. Rosenthal. I can't believe you're quite as dumb as you pretend to be. I think you have a good idea. I think it's important that we make this clear, as clear as we possibly plan, to all of our colleagues. And you know that many of us who come to this microphone will do our best to do so as well. Please make it clear for us how you feel on these issues. Thank you.
That will close our public comment on this. We have, Mr. Clerk, we have motions before us. We go usually in reverse order. Clerk said they had been circulated, Ms. Perry?
Yeah.
So as such, they've been introduced. We'd go with B first, which would be the 245 piece?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And I ask for, and I vote on the 245.
Okay. Is everybody clear what they're voting on? This is to assert jurisdiction? Yes.
Item number 22 simply asks for a report. Like, I assume we're going to know and bow to item and vote on A and B, is that--
No, these are amendments to that. So we would be able to-- We'd go through B. That would either pass or not. If it doesn't pass, we'd go to A. Then as such, that would be attached to 22, and it would go forward. We'd take a final vote on that, as amended or as not amended.
You're treating them as amendments to that. And you're taking B up first?
Yeah. Reverse order, in the order they're introduced. Okay? Please open the roll. Everybody got their votes in? This is-- A yes vote is to assert jurisdiction, and a no vote is to reject. Okay? Please, sorry, open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, five noes.
Okay. That does not move forward. Next, we have 22A. Please open the roll. As amended. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And then, as amended, we have item 22 before us. Please open the roll.
And, Mr. President, that can be simply a note and file on the committee report.
All right. We'll go ahead and note and file if there's no objection to that. Okay. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, that takes care of the items in the special meeting. Do you wish to adjourn that and go back to the regular?
Yes, please. Let's go back to the regular meeting?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused May 4th, 5th, 11th, 12th, 18th, 19th, 21st, 25th, 26th, June 1st, 2nd, and 4th for personal business. And that does meet council policy.
All right. She is excused.
Councilmember Labange requests to be excused and leave at 11:00 a.m. on May 4th for city business. That meets council policy.
All right. She is excused.
Councilmember Coretts requests to be excused to arrive at 10:30 on May 19th and June 16th. Both for city business. Both meet council policy.
He is excused.
And Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused June 11th, 15th, 16th, 18th, 22nd, 23rd, and 25th for personal business. That meets council policy.
He is excused. Thank you.
That clears the desk.
Any announcements, colleagues? Now, we'll begin our budget hearings shortly. Mr. Parks will be with us shortly. And I think they'll start probably about 15 minutes after we finish today. That'll be about 1:30. We'll begin our budget hearings. Other announcements? Mr.-- Do we have any adjourning motions today? I can ask folks to please rise for our adjourning motions. Can recognize Mr. Weisar for a first adjourning motion. I can ask everybody in the audience to please rise as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I know there's still some talking going on in the chambers. I'd ask that we quiet down as we--
We can ask our interviews and other things to-- Please wait till after our adjourning motions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And colleagues, I'd ask that we adjourn today in honor of Ernest Marie Stickney, who was better known as Brother by all who knew him and loved him in Boyle Heights. Brother was a longtime volunteer as a greeter at First Street Elementary School for children during nutrition and lunch. Brother Stickney was born on October 15, 1938, in Dermont, Arkansas, two hours after his twin sister, Eunice Marie. His parents were Tim Marie Hay Stickney. The family lived in Dermont for about five years after his birth before moving to Los Angeles in 1943. They settled in Boyle Heights area, where Brother lived until his passing. He attended First Street Elementary, Hollenbach Middle School, and Roosevelt High School. Brother also attended the Bible Institute of Los Angeles in downtown Los Angeles for a few years, enhancing his knowledge about the Bible. For many years, he attended Marshall Memorial Church of the Nazarene and participated in the Bible studies, camping trips, and other activities of this church together with his sister and friends from the neighborhood. Because of his disability, Brother wasn't able to work. But he did not let that stop him from using his God-given gift of helping others. Because of his love and concern for children, he worked as a volunteer in the Neighborhood Head Start Program. When that program ended, Brother started an escort service walking children in the neighborhood to and from school. In some cases, he did this for three generations of children. Brother had a kind, gentle, and loving spirit, and all who knew him loved him. In June 2009, Brother became ill and entered White Memorial Hospital, where he stayed as a patient until his passing on April 18, 2010. Brother and his family were thankful for the doctors, nurses, and all the other staff who brought him much comfort during his long stay at this facility. Brother was preceded in his death by his parents, Tom and Mark Stickney.